Someone full-time just to take care of this, which is constantly happening. We're gonna take cars off of the main arteries that are for sale, so it doesn't look like a parking lot out there.
It's a Shell station.
For sale. They're all up and down. We deal with inoperable cars throughout town. There are many inoperable vehicles, which are not only eyesores, but obviously, as you can see, a danger. I mean, this car was sitting out there for almost seven days till we could finally get it moved out of there. The town is full of trailers that are all over, big, small. We try to mitigate disturbances through neighbors who have problems where they're parked. We try and keep them on paved surfaces, things along that line. We deal with dead trees, diseased trees. Calls will come in to us, we'll deal with public works or an arborist. We'll have the dead trees removed. To date, through last summer and this summer, we've had fifteen dead trees removed throughout town, either in the public way by our crews or by private residents. This is the reason why several times they've fallen off. Thank God they haven't in the house, but they have damaged fences on a couple of occasions. We work with the PD to remove graffiti from all areas of town. PD wants to see the graffiti prior to us having it removed, so they can monitor what's going on in town with any kind of gang activity or anything along that line. Next are a few slides, which will give an idea of the different kinds of issues we deal with in regards to single-family homes and multiple family structures with their maintenance problems. If I'm going too fast or too slow, just speak up. We had several of these balconies fixed throughout a complex. They're all deteriorated. Issues like this. Here we have a garage. We had a house here that we had the eaves, windows, everything replaced. The house has fallen apart. It was in foreclosure and it was sold. We had a garage. That's what the garage is today. Here's a garage that was falling over. We cited them to do something with that garage. Today, that's that same house. We had a problem here. Many, many complaints, rodents, environments coming and living in here, just an eyesore stuffed all around. Today, that's what we had gotten accomplished through that. And then another one, which everyone's probably familiar with this. That's what we had done to that. We're also constantly having fences repaired all over town. This is one that we're still working on. This is one, believe it or not, that took over a year to get fixed. That's what it is today. Major concern residents, West Nile virus, stagnant water. This is another thing that we deal with constantly on small scale and all types of scales. This is going on all over town. We don't find out unless somebody called, because we can never get into the backyard of people unless we're next door to somebody. But we do mitigate these. This pool is actually totally gone now. It's been broken out. It's an epidemic in town. We deal with mold problems when we're called. We'll mitigate these, sometimes deal with the DuPage Public Health Department. We'll have the mold removed, everything repaired, but then we have to also find the cause and have that eliminated. These slides here, we also deal with life safety issues on a daily basis as well. We do deal with a lot of that in regards to our new rental housing inspection program. But here's a case that we found where there was no hand railing. At the thirty inches of height, you need a hand railing around any kind of a platform. So we had that installed. Same here. As a retired firefighter, I'll tell you, as I go in the front door on a fire, I'm counting on a back door to be out there. They did not have that. At this point in time, we have this going up. Another function we provide is issuing stop work orders and citations for work begun without permits or done without permits. This is a job that was stopped midway through. Here's another home that they didn't think they needed a permit to do what they're doing And here's another home that we happen to have upon. This gentleman bought a BMW that couldn't fit in his garage, so he decided to move the bearing wall to get the car into the garage. We stopped that. Garage addition, as well as some work here that, if you see this project, if you're familiar with it, it turned out very, very nice. Here's one of my personal favorites. These people just decided to pour concrete. No foundation, no framing, just started pouring on black dirt. We stopped that one. We strongly enforce the permit process to eliminate things like this. This is in a warehouse. We caught two of these going up. As you can see, it's just stick construction built with styrofoam walls. They had the foresight to drop in a sprinkler head, though, in case the styrofoam did catch a fire, which is very flammable. This is how it was powered, through an outlet over here to a cord through the roof. And then, there's probably a dozen or so cords that ran air conditioners, computers, stuff like that. They're in the process of carrying these down now as we speak. Here's another, this is actually in one of our rental units. We found this is a combination bathroom laundry room. You can see the water lines, the hot and cold for the washer machine. And then you can see these gray lines. This is in with a toilet and a sink. Those lines are actually supplying water to the sink. These are the kind of thing, this is why you need to follow the permit process, to make sure these kind of unsafe conditions don't occur. We also require permits for furnace replacement, water heater replacement, for obvious reasons. But these are no-cost permits to the citizens, so we do still enforce this, though. The next area, we receive many complaints in, and we expend a lot of time and efforts trying to gain compliance, our rubbish and garbage areas. This here is actually the file from this property. Yeah, this is still in court. There was actually a warrant out for the gentleman's arrest. And we've made a lot of headway, I'd have to say, in the last couple of months, which one of the aldermen are definitely aware of. This is all correspondence, pictures, tickets, things along that line. I mean, this stuff is just intolerable. No one puts up with it, and there's calls, just constantly, on stuff like this. This house was also another with a dead tree that we had removed that was actually split in half and tied together with a chain to hold it. Here's a home that we had another dead tree removed and had these problems. This was another lengthy case, couple, six months, court proceedings and things. But when we're all said and done, that's what we ended up with, which has turned out pretty good. We monitor. Okay, here's a couple more. This is still that same case that's in court. A lot of these homes with areas like this are foreclosed homes that were having problems getting anybody to do any work on because of influx between owners and banks. We have to spend many, many hours trying to get property management companies through the associations that are gonna buy the banks or whatever, or have our PW do the work. But, I mean, these are just becoming a major problem. We monitor construction sites. We don't let this stuff lie around. They will end up cleaning that kind of stuff up. Next couple slides, we're gonna show you our recent success stories. As you can see here, this is a house built in 1920. We had this staircase removed and this blocked off in the fall. There was an elderly woman that lived here, and it was fall time. We did not want to move her out of our house. We told her in spring we were gonna come back and address this to her family. This is the backside of that. These are some more pictures of the house itself. If you can see here, this is the kitchen floor. They had a dog, and he liked that spot. And it actually just wore through from the dog urine. Yep, no other way to say it. There was their bathroom. You can see this was the actual shower that went up. That's the ceiling. But today, this is where we're at. You see, this was that rotted material over here. This is where that back porch was. This is actually right here. This is now that. Our bathroom, it's now a new bathroom. And our kitchen is in the process still, but that's where our friendly dog was spending his time. Here's another case that we had. We were called here from the standpoint of no heat and a flooded basement. This is the basement that we encountered. As you can see here, there's a water line. All this stuff was under about three feet. Burn boiler, water heater was all ruined. These are some of these unsafe conditions that we found in that basement. This is the basement when we were done. As you can see, the water line, little blurry there. But as we went upstairs, this is what we found in the kitchen. Still refrigerator, there's a sink back here somewhere. None of this usable. You look down the hallway, there's a room here into a living room.
There's John.
Is that your house, John?
This goes into the living room. As you can see, there's the front door, no access at all. And right around here would be a little walkway to the place where the individual slept. That was it. After three of these, we ended up with the kitchen. This is that same living room that you seen, John. It's the room to the left that you couldn't see. Front door is now accessible. This was the couch. This is another one. Yet again, this date is incorrect. It's a bad slide on its side. I don't know how to skip through there. This is where DCFS actually was brought in on this, because there was a child here. Had to climb over things just to get to his chair to use his computer. But now, as we left the case, this is where we're at. Constant monitoring, calling of other family members for help. Okay, this would be the one, if you want to leave the room, you might want to leave the room. This was a home that we had raccoon problem, living in the roof. It was all over. Neighbors were complaining constantly. This house has since been removed, and it's a brand-new, beautiful house in this lot. This was a town home next to another home. This is all dog mess. It was just a horrible smell over there. And as of today, this is what that's like, dog has been created. So we've checked on this and monitored it still, without further calls, just to make sure that we're not digressing in any way, shape, or form. This is one of my personal favorites. This has been a real problem. Took several weeks to get in here. This is actually a town home where the smell was so bad that three, four units down were calling, complaining. This is the year in that the dogs were being kept in a garage. There's two dogs, six kids living in the home. Once we got in, it took about two weeks to get in. This is what we found. This was all seeped and just loaded and smelled. It was, I've been a fireman for twenty years, and I never had to leave somewhere gagging, and I had to leave that place. It was just absolutely horrible. We haven't been able to locate them. This is another home that was in foreclosure. And I, it was cleaned up. It smells a lot better, but it's still not to where it needs to be. These are our last couple of slides. And that's what we've got today. So, as you've seen, we encounter a wide variety of problems. These are, in my estimation, only the tip of the iceberg in town. As we get deeper into the rental housing inspections, and the foreclosures rise, as everybody hears on the news, this place is definitely not immune to that. They're all over. I can tell you twenty of them right now, and probably twenty more that I don't know about. Many, many more of these situations, needing attention just like this, are gonna be available. Again, we have shown you tonight was approximately one hundred and thirty pictures of more than two thousand pictures I've taken in the past two years. So as you see, this is only a small show of what we have been working on. And as I stated earlier, I believe is only scratching the surface. I'd like to thank several people in the council who always support us. When we have to make tough decisions and people come griping, they always do the right thing. Same with Frank Williams, anything goes upstairs, you know, he sticks to his guns and lets us do our job, because we can't be varying away from stuff like that. Well, pretty much, that's it. I wanted to give a quick rental housing inspection detail here. We have one hundred and fifty-one applications that we've sent out. So far, fifty have been returned to us. I've done twenty-three inspections and have closed thirteen of those. Ten of them have been returned by mail, so we have to find out where the owners are at. But pretty much, that's it.
Do you have any suggestions or anything you might want to comment about that the public should know, or neighbors of people should know?
Be willing to call us and have to give us at least a phone number to call them back, because we get a lot of anonymous phone calls. And due to certain circumstances, we can't maybe get things done as fast as they want, or we just can't do things. And then we'll get more and more dread from people. So that would be one thing. Another thing, people are afraid to do that, and they need to do that. They'll be left anonymous, will come over there. But I do believe with the rental housing program that we've got, we're gonna be getting in a lot more areas. As we're into this house, this backyard, we're gonna get a lot more visuals, so there are gonna be a lot more things we can take care of.
The police department has a number that there's no caller ID on, the 766-2060 number. Should people use that number to call, perhaps, if they don't want to identify themselves, but to point out a problem somewhere?
Yes, that would be a great idea, actually. And it'll always make it to us. Anything they don't want to do, they send to us anyway, so we'll definitely get that stuff.
Questions, Alderman, Wesley.
I want to also say, I have been involved in several of these houses already. People have to understand that our building department, we've been on one for almost several years now. It does, it will not be corrected overnight. It takes time. So the people file complaint, they gotta give the building department a chance to do the searching for these properties, and do it. We have an incident right now in Elmhurst we thought we had under control, very well under control, and all of a sudden, now we've lost control because it flipped ownerships. Now it went to a different bank, so now we're back from square one. But my hat goes off to the building department on issues that has been done here. I think they have done the best job they possibly can with the staff they have to empower on this. It is tying up a lot of court time right now on some of these situations, but as you seen in the pictures, we have accomplished a lot on pursuing it. So, but on a follow-up on that, Joe, let me ask you this question. If you got a house looking like that, and we go back there again, and we lose, and they go back to the same routine, do we start at square one, or do we find them from the time on, or how does that work, or we give them another chance? I mean, how, could you brief?
It'll go on a case-by-case basis. I mean, there's just some things we won't tolerate, and people will know that. Things along this line with the houses that are hoarded, as you see, I mean, it's hard to cite people like that, because it's just counterproductive. You know, they're never gonna pay the fine, they're gonna get into court. We're gonna have to still do the legwork we're doing anyway. So we know who we generally have to work with, who we don't have to work with. We have to put a hammer down. We know when we have to do it, pretty much. Sometimes we get caught in quagmire, but overall, I think things work out pretty well.
And this, for the council knows too, and this case, and a lot of these cases too, if we see that we're making headways on issues like these houses, that they are making headway, I mean, we may not pursue right to court, but we are making headways, we're gonna give them some time to correct the problem. I just don't want people to think that we cite you, and then we're gonna come back and cite you again and keep pounding you. If you're making headway on there, we are willing, we are out to get the city here, get them, the people, but we want them to bring the houses up to code, bring them in safe condition in the neighborhood, for the neighborhood does not go down in retail. And we are willing, the staff is willing to work with them as long as they're making progress. But if they are making progress, then yeah, we are moving forward with cases. So I just want to take my hat off to Joe and the building department, and obviously, we've seen some good progress going on here. I hope we could keep doing this, and I hope we could get that rental property up and running really strong and take care of those issues, too. So I thank you for all your hard work on that, Joe.
And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Alderman, Winger.
I also want to thank the building department for their hard work, and certainly, these are life safety. Several of them are life safety issues that we need to address, and ultimately, it helps the residents that live in these situations, and it brings them back to a better quality of life. And then also, I want to point out the smaller, more detailed items that you've been working on, which are important for our community to have a more pristine appearance. I was able to read, I received a report on your open cases and your closed cases and the ones you're working on. And I went through the whole thing, and I said, you know, "Look at all that's going on," and it's really good. And then also, like, I saw the icicle lights that we gave out the tickets for them to take them down. And that's also important, because residents keep those icicle lights out. Why do they put them up if they don't want to take them down? I don't understand. But now, a lot of them are down, and that's good, because it helps our neighborhood have a more pristine appearance. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman, Coles.
I'd like to thank, I know Joe does a good job, because I saw some pictures in there that I know the houses that he went to, because they were in our neighborhood. And they have been worked on, and I appreciate all the hard work you do.
Okay. That was for information only. Thank you. Finally, the items to be considered at future meetings. Number one, a telecommunications ordinance. When are we expecting that?
Mr. Chairman, I talked to the city attorney, and we wanted to bring that forward as soon as possible. The attorneys in the entire area are working on that, and rather than pass a model ordinance, they want to make sure they got everything together. So we should have that in September for your approval.
Very good. And the zoning code rewrite.
The update on that, Mr. Chairman, is that the city attorney's office is in the final phase of completing the contract, which will be analyzed and signed. It's some near-future date, so that we can move forward with this project. But they had to draft the contract, and there was a little delay with respect to the proposal, final documents that Land Vision had sent forward. So, anyway, it's in the works and should be done shortly, and we'll be bringing it back to council for...
And Alderman, Caddell, and I will be informed about the meetings.
Oh, yes, absolutely. But the meetings can't start until, you know, we get the contract taken care of.
So we're talking probably next year sometime, actually, for to bring this to council.
Well, we're hoping, we're optimistic in that we can hopefully get the contract back and get that done, and have something brought back to council, maybe in September. And then we can start working on the individual meetings and the actual rewrite.
The contract in September, okay. And then the B4 zoning.
The B4 zoning is still on, as a table item for the zoning board of appeals and planning commission. We have not received any direction since after your joint meeting of May 21st, I believe. But that is still on, is still as a table issue.
Okay. Is there anything further from the city manager or from any committee member? Mr. Mayor.
Just on the B4 zoning, isn't that part of the zoning code rewrite? Aren't they recommending a B4?
It is, Mayor, but I believe the direction that was taken at that joint meeting was the fact that the basic generic format of the description of a B4 zoning would move forward, and the fine-tuning of it would take effect at a later date after the consultants and staff and council members got together and discussed those specifics. But the basics of it should move forward.
I thought it was the other way around, but that's okay. At least I think the impression of the zoning board was the other way around, that they wanted to meet with the zoning code consultant and have input back and forth. And then as an outflow of that, they would draft a B4 zoning. I think that's why it was put on hold.
Well, the only problem with that, Mayor, is that at this point in time, without any projected schedule for the meeting dates and times and what the process will entail, it's kind of hard for anybody to determine when that time may be. At least if the B4 concept is approved, we could move forward in the direction with certain developers who may come in and at least want to find out what direction we're moving in. And certainly, we'd be able to advise them that this is the, this is the basic format, but it's going to be subject to change just as soon as the development process with respect to the rewrite continues on.
So staff's recommendation would be that the planning commission go forward with the B4 zoning, but then two, three months later, it would be amended after the rewrite takes place?
That would probably be the direction that, that would be most optimistic for the final result. The point of the B4 zoning is the fact that we had all talked about the basics and the conceptual idea of this. And I think what we have to do is get that approved, and then any of the adjustments that are made, that can be done certainly as we proceed through the process.
Could we not perhaps have a meeting with those consultants, with Alderman, Caddell, and myself, and the zoning, the ZBA and planning board, as soon as a contract is scheduled something, as soon as a contract is signed?
Well, we can certainly address those concerns while we get the contract back, and maybe what we can do is do an update at that time.
Alderman, Felice.
All right. I think we're having a little miscommunication. I mean, we had that special meeting that we posted and everything, and building and zoning, and city council, and we came up with the map, because everybody was concerned about the map. We came up with the map. I thought, I was under the impression, building and zoning was now working on coming up, you know. I know we received, I think Mr. Clicker had a proposal. We had made some changes, but they were gonna fine-tune it and present it to us within the next month or two. Now I'm hearing that we're waiting for the zoning rewrite, which could take another eight months to a year. I think, you know, some of the things in there we were talking about was, they were talking about eleven, twelve stories. I know a lot of the board members and council members are really opposed to eleven and twelve stories. Maybe something they should consider is six stories, like we have at the Giorgio's project right now. But I think we should be the ones, building and zoning, city council, to iron out the B4. These guys who are coming in to rewrite should be tweaking or making suggestions. They may come in and suggest twelve stories, just because they've suggested it, doesn't mean we want it. They're just an extra service for us. We should be working on this in the next couple of months, getting something on paper, and then they look at it. They might have some great suggestions, and that's great. We can make those changes after they're done. But if we're gonna wait for them for eight months, we're basically just putting the city at a standstill on Irving Park for another eight months to a year, and we're gonna miss next building season. I think we should try and move this forward somehow.
Wouldn't you see the contract being signed between us and the consultants?
That to occur in September.
In September. So then it could be soon after that. Go ahead.
Do we really need those guys to tell us, you know, they might, they might like the ten, twelve stories. Shouldn't we start drawing up our own and let them tell us some suggestion? Well, we think this will be better, that might not be as good. But the basic concept, we know, we know what we're looking for. We're looking for retail, sales tax dollars. We know how high we want to go. The eleven, twelve-story thing is not gonna fly in Irving Park. I'm pretty sure the council does not want, you know, the tall eleven, twelve stories up and down Irving Park. Six stories, I see, it's already happening, you know. And we did the charrette at Georgetown. And we did the charrette at Georgetown. I think one of the groups offered a six-story building. Everybody else was at four or five. So I think we should move forward.
Alderman Wesley.
By the way, I understand with all that meeting, maybe I was wrong, but I thought the meeting was the building and zoning board got a list on what should be in the B4 zoning and they were taking that list and saying, no, they didn't want that B4. They didn't want that, they didn't want that item, they didn't want that item. I thought that was a concept. And I agree with Alderman Uzio here. I don't think we should wait and I don't think we should have, I thought we got the directions that they go through the list. This is what we need for B4, whatever. I thought that was the direction I thought we were going with this. And maybe I, maybe I missed something at that meeting or things changed overnight on this ballgame. But I thought that was the thing that they were going to go through a master list. We gave them a master list on what is in a B4, that are entitled B4 and they were going to go through that list and make that decision and start crossing out what they don't think that should be in the B4 zoning. I agree, I don't think we should wait that long. I think we should have the city council, the building and zoning board approve the B4 zoning down the line and then we could do our work and start getting these developments that wants to come in. You know, like typical example, I heard on the news the other day that, what's it? Starbucks is planning on opening another 190 stores in the Chicagoland area. Here's a perfect opportunity for us to get a Starbucks if we could find a line and give them some directions. Were a B4 maybe zoning. I mean, here we don't have that authority right now and there's stuff in the back burner going on and we need to narrow that before we go forward with another big project that may be coming down the drain.
Alderman Caddell.
Yeah, I lost a piece of this somewhere along the way too. I thought we walked out of that meeting, we had actually even taken a vote that this is probably, you know, this is very likely the map we want to go with. I know there may still be some PZBA members that aren't sold on B4 and that's fine, but I don't, I don't think it's wise to wait until the zoning rewrite. I mean, it may be take another couple of months to get contracted. It's going to take whatever, six to eight months, I think they said, or possibly even longer to get the rewrite. And then, of course, we're all going to have to discuss that and vote on whether or not that's the, that's the final be all end all. If we think the B4 is a good idea, then it's a good idea today too, not just in a year from now. If the PZBA wants to, you know, doesn't think it's a good idea, well, stop tabling it and let's, you know, let's at least come back to city council and say, you know what? We don't, we don't want this. And, you know, then we'll at least take that recommendation. But I'm afraid that this is, I'm afraid that this stalling is, we're just going to lose time on it. And, you know, I don't know. My, you know, my agenda, I think this council's agenda is to, is to be able to make this work and move forward with it. And I don't want to lose a year on it.
I think you have your direction, but Alderman Coles wants to make a comment first.
I believe a few years ago, we, the council had decided on six stories was the limit between five and six stories because the fire department only had, had equipment that would go up to that. And that's the reason why we, I believe it was two or three years ago, we decided on five stories or six stories. And because the fire department can only handle stuff like that. Of course, the apartments now have sprinkler systems in them because we arrived at that years ago, they didn't have that. But still, when you tell a fireman he's going to go up a ladder six stories high, it gets kind of weary up there. So, I mean, I talked to the chief when, one time they were having a, by the junior high school and he said that six stories would be perfect. That would be the top, the limit that we could do in Wooddale right now. But that don't say later.
I think you have your direction, have the zoning board and planning board look at it and give them instructions in the next meeting. Mr. Manager.
We had no staff at that meeting, of course, so we didn't know what the outcome was. However, we're looking perhaps for the committee or the council to recommend to the ZBA to put it back on the agenda so that we can work in conjunction with them and with the council to develop the concept along with the consultant. As you recall, we did the same thing with the sign, with the sign code. You know, we began the process, but we had something in place. And we are getting inquiries daily from different developers along Irving Park and what's happening and we can't tell them anything. And of course, you know, the first thing is the zoning that we're concerned about. So if that could be done, they could be directed at least to put it on their agenda to deal with it and then staff would work with them and work out the details.
I think you have our direction for that. Alderman Felice.
Right, I don't even think we need to make the motion. I mean, we sat down with building and zoning and the council, we had the special meeting. They already know that we want to move forward with the B4. And I really don't, you know, it's not like I want to step on their toes or tell them, you know, you got to do this, you got to do that. All we're looking for is a recommendation. Let's get the ball rolling, bottom line.
Everybody agreed? I think you have it. Okay, is there any other business?
Yes, I do.
Alderman Wesley.
The item that I'd like to see on here, when another developer comes forward now on for anything, the fire department's got to appear here and give us a reason why we don't have a culversack on it in this meeting. I mean, because, you know, I just don't like this, you know, I really don't.
So you're saying that staff should talk with the fire department and have arranged to have somebody from the fire department here whenever they have this type of situation?
Yes, to answer the question, because a letter to me is not good enough to me. I mean, we ran into that situation, we approved one, I don't care how big the development is.
So it's not a future item, it's just a direction?
Yeah, well, they got to send them a letter saying that they, they need to come.
That's fine, that's exactly what we'll do is we'll follow through on that and make their attendance mandatory, so to speak.
Anything else? Okay, if there's no other business to come before this committee this evening, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting of planning, zoning and building committee is adjourned.
I want to declare a five-minute break. I'm calling to order the public works committee meeting of August 9, 2007. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Felice.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Caddell.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Shaki. Alderman Lewitan.
I declare a quorum present. I make a motion to approve minutes dated July 12, 2007. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next item. Report and recommendation on special service area number 14 contract award. And in this case, staff is recommending that we recommend the contract to Arrow Road construction in amount of $1,909,000. They were the lowest bidder. And any questions, comments before I go ahead and make that motion?